Pray for those in our community who are now being affected by the recent rains of abundance and we seek your restoration. We come before you in prayer for the farmers in our area that they may get into the field soon. And that what is planted may become a bountiful harvest in the months ahead. Now bless each council member as they carry out your work tonight. I pray for Tim and Chad, Dave, Pat, and our mayor, Mayor Gary. May they graciously hear each item before them tonight and make clear decisions that will continue to assist this community in its growth. May Hutchinson continue to be a city where families make their homes, where children can learn and play and grow in safety. Where people at whatever stage of life find care and compassion and where all people thrive. May our city leaders tonight have a sense of satisfaction in the work that is accomplished here as they go home. We pray this in my name. Amen.
Thank you. Next, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Recognizations of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? All right, we do have a proclamation underneath there. Bike Month. Whereas May has been declared National Bike Month for each of the last sixty years. And League of American Bikylists and the Hutchinson Bicycle Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Council, Bicycle Clubs, Schools, Park and Recreation Departments, Leaks Department, Hospital, Businesses and Civic Groups throughout Hutchinson and McLeod County will be promoting bicycling as a part of a healthy activity lifestyle and environmentally friendly alternative to the automobile during the month of May two thousand twenty-three. Whereas in the city of Hutchinson recognizes as a bronze level bike-friendly community promotes the safety bicyclists. Bicycling will take place in May throughout various community events. Highlighting bicycling, riding as environmentally sound transportation, excellent recreation. And whereas the loose line state trail in many miles of city trails attract and provide bicyclists access to the city of Hutchinson and surrounding areas. And whereas Hutchinson has a strong bike culture, increasingly robust infrastructure and family-focused community events centered around healthy living. And whereas bicycling activities have a positive impact on Hutchinson economy and tourism industry, which has been shown to improve community health, well-being, quality of life, community spirit, traffic safety, and reduce pollution and congestion. And whereas the education of bicycles and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles and important to ensure the safety of all users. And now therefore it resolve that the city of Hutchinson hereby recognizes the month of May two thousand twenty-three as National Bike Month. Be a further resolve that the Hutchinson City Council urges the support bicycling to participate in bicycling around Hutchinson community and urges everyone using roadways to share the road safely with bicycles. And when this therefore I have here on to set my hand this twenty-fifth day of April two thousand twenty-three. A public comment, citizens addressing the council, just please come forward, state your name and address for the. All right, approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Tim, second by Dave to approve some regular meeting minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of issuing carnival permit to J N K Amusement May twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three in the Hutchinson Mall parking lot. B is approval of issuing parade permit to American Legion Post ninety-sixth on May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. C is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to Shady Lane Sportsman's Club on June sixteenth and seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three at the McLeod County Fairgrounds. D is approval of issuing temporary liquor license to the Minnesota Pottery Festival on July twenty-ninth and thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three at the Sonic West River Park. E is approval of lease agreement with Hardy Machine at the Hutchinson Enterprise Center. F is approval of letter of support to the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership, an application for low-income housing and tax credit. G is approval of a non-waiver of tort liability limits for general liability. F is approval of the two thousand twenty-three street repair. I has approval of resolution number one, five, six, zero, one, resolution sunsetting the use of paid COVID leaf on. And J is a claim to appropriation and contract payments. Anything anybody wants pulled off?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. We do not have public hearing. We're going to move on anyway. But so communications requests and petitions. We have the Hutchinson Husky update. New grandstand press box, V M F, Dave Mooney Baseball Complex. This is Mesner.
How you doing?
Good.
You can introduce yourself to everyone.
Yeah, my name's Kyle Mesner. I'm part of the Husky Board along with Kurt Wentland, part of the Husky Board. I would just like to thank the city council for giving me this opportunity to give you an update on the grandstand project at V M F. This has been going on for about two years now when I first started this. And that little PowerPoint of the project and what's what's going on. I know there's been some new members, so I'm going to kind of go over some of the history of it. But so this is the top left picture is a picture of back in probably the seventies when it was called Tarden Park. Some of you guys probably don't remember that, but that's how it used to be Tarden Park back in the day. So back in nineteen eighty-five, it was decided by a few baseball people in Hutch that they wanted to start talent team ball again. It was it was we had it a while ago and it was not available. We didn't have it for a few years. They started it back up in nineteen eighty-five. So in the process, we started building a new field. That's the next picture of us, of the the concept of the new field with the volunteer helps of people laying aside, building the concession stand. And the bottom two pitchers are the field itself. Of course, you see the river with the water on the field. We've had that a few times down at V M F, so we're used to that. And then the game played there at V M F. That's just kind of the history throughout the years. I spent a lot of years down at the ballpark fixing the field, playing on that field throughout throughout my years. So now currently, this is what V M F looks like right now. So that's V M F right now. We've done a lot of projects down at V M F throughout the years through the Huskies and the city of Hutch through the new backstop backstop. When they first started that project, it was just the backstop they were going to fix. Once they started digging, the original dugouts collapsed. So then they had to build new dugouts. Added a new fence. And so they've done a lot of new things. This is one of the top ballparks in the state of Minnesota right now. Next slide. So these are the projects that we've done throughout the years. I'm just going to kind of give you a little background. So back in nineteen eighty-six, we they formed a Hutch Baseball Association where they borrowed a hundred thousand dollars to start this project. And that included building the grandstand. That include doing the dugouts and putting lights up and siding the field. And that money was borrowed and it was paid off through we we sold calendars throughout probably ten fifteen years to pay off that loan. And these are some of the things that the Huskies have donated from nineteen eighty-six to today. We also have some donations from people that the Huskies went out and got got donations from. So that that includes from nineteen eighty-six down to present, which is about two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars that we've contributed back to the field itself. Whatever we make at V M F, if it's tournaments or whatnot, we contribute back to the field. In two thousand nineteen, we adopted the field. So that means that we had to buy some equipment. And those are the equipment that we bought throughout the years, which totaled about seventeen thousand five hundred. To the to the other side, what the city of Hutchinson has committed down there at V M F and two thousand fourteen to today to twenty twenty, they they, like I said, they financed for the new backstop backstop, the new fence, and also the new dugouts and have done some other things. If you can see, they replaced the fence for forty-two thousand three hundred, but the Huskies have donated fifteen thousand dollars towards that project. So they can get it started. We also do advertising on the fence. And with that agreement with adopting the field, fifty percent of that advertising goes back to the city of Hutch. So we've contributed with that advertising twenty over twenty-two thousand dollars back to the city of Hutch for that advertising. So like I said, what we do down there, what we the money that we make, it goes right back into the field. Next slide. So our grandstand right now, if you look at it, I know that the League of Minnesota Cities went down there and did some looking at the the grandstand and other things. And I do have a pamphlet from that. And right now, our current grandstand has no handrails going up for elderly people or other people that try to get up to the to seat, take a seat up way up on top. We have no designated handicap seating areas. We do have other areas that they could sit, but nothing is designated at that time. Our current grandstand sits about two hundred and fifty fans with only the middle section covered. Our new grandstand would have handrails on all three sections. We have six we would have six handicap seating areas that are designated. It would sit about three hundred and eighty-one fans and all of the seating areas would be covered. Plus, we would have a press box in the middle section. Go ahead.
What is the handicap seating designation? What does that consist of?
For the new grandstand?
Yeah.
So within the grandstand itself, there'd be cutouts.
Okay, like wheelchairs or?
Or wheelchairs, and that's part of coin.
Okay, see Chad, if you can, these, okay, sure.
So that's the that's the drawings of the new of the new grandstand. So they'd be cut out in every section.
Sure.
Six of them, yeah. Our involvement down at the Huskies involvement down at V M F, we try to get the community and businesses involved. We do every every year. We have Veterans Day, which we get, we do have veterans get in for free. And we have a ceremony before the game for all veterans. We have a first responder day where we get the police, the fire department, the ambulance come down. And we introduce them before the game. They walk on the field. We introduce them and they get in for free also. The last two, three years, we've done with United Way, which is books and baseball. What that consists of is kids come down and they come on the field and our players read to them on the field. And after that is done, they run the bases and then we serve hot dogs and water to them, which is donated by Cashwise. We also do pick a base, which is sponsored by Walmart and Target. They give us gift cards and each home game, we pick out a fan from the stands and they have to pick what base that gift card is underneath. So it's kind of we get the get the fans involved and and last year, if they don't pick the right base, say it's a twenty-five dollar gift card, the following game is fifty dollars. So it keeps going up. So they get excited and they ask, well, how much is it this this game? So you get get them involved. Then we have Chevy Youth Night, some camps, K D Z Fan Appreciation Fan Appreciation Night. We have Dairy Night, which we bring down the royalty, dairy royalty, and they hand give out free ice cream to the fans. We also do a McLeod County Fair Fair Night. Go ahead. Like here's a future opportunity. Since our involvement with the United Way, somebody from the United Way contacted Fox nine. Right now, there's if you ever watch Fox nine, they have a Fox nine town ball classic tour, which is really big. It it brings in a lot of people and it gives the community, you know, it's it's good for the community. So a person from the United Way contacted a person from Fox nine and said that this Fox Town Ball Classic Tour needs to come to Hutchinson because of the involvement the Huskies have with books and baseball. So right now, it's in the works to come in twenty twenty-four. It's a great opportunity to show off Hutchinson. They don't they come down to the field with their cameras and they do interviews and it's just not about baseball. It's about the community of Hutchinson, what Hutchinson has to offer. So I mean, we we, you know, on our logo, it says there's much in Hutch. So let's show them what we got in Hutch. So that's a great opportunity for that. In twenty twenty-five, we have a state tournament. This I do believe this is our fourth state tournament that we've hosted. It's three weekends. It's two weekends, two last weekends in August and the first weekend in September. Generate revenue for Hutchinson. Next slide. Talking about revenue. Mary Hotsen and Dolph Moon back in twenty sixteen figured out how much revenue a state tournament brings by their calculation. This is their calculations below. So in twenty sixteen, they calculated about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars was brought back into Hutchinson from the three weekends. So in twenty twenty-five, we project with inflation and whatnot, about five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars would be brought back into Hutchinson on those three weekends. So that's that's and we have the state tournament roughly every eight to eight to ten years. So it's a great opportunity for for Hutchinson. Partnership, like I said before, we adopted field in in twenty nineteen. What does that mean? Anything that's within the fenced in the area, the Huskies take care of mowing the grass, field prep. Field prep means we get the field ready for games, high school games, Legion games, junior Legion games, Husky games. And we do clean up and make sure it's ready to to go to the next game. And we also, you know, do smaller projects on our own down there to help with labor savings and stuff like that. The city does provide field and bathroom supplies. And they also fix major issues that happen down at at V M F. So. In conclusion, I I just this is a great, we have a great relationship with the city of Hutchinson and like to continue this for years to come. I'm here today to strengthen that relationship with this grandstand project and I'm asking for city support of two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. Basically, that's half of what the project cost. When I started this project back and and a couple of years ago and I met with a guy and designed the the grandstand, it's gone up thirty percent from two years ago. Right now, the current grandstand that I have is around three hundred and seventy thousand dollars to build. But that does not include engineering work, soil samples, concrete work and all that stuff, which could be another hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. Right now, I've raised, we've raised with pledges and donations around ninety thousand dollars in the two years, which I'm going to continue to raise money throughout this project. Let me just see your ones. Looking at my notes. Like I said, I think this is just a great opportunity for Hutchinson and we need this grandstand. It's just another added feature. We've done every everything else to upgrade this facility. And that's basically, like I said, this is this grandstand is thirty-seven years old. So.
How many fans do you guys draw on an average night?
It varies depending on the night and who are playing. We could average hundred and fifty to two hundred fans a night.
Sure.
Yeah.
Matt, could you go back to the drawing of the stand? Right there. Kyle, you want to talk about like the stadium seedings in the center and then the benches and?
Yeah, so right now we'll have the current drawing is stadium seats in the center. I think there'd be like a hundred and forty-seven of those. And then on the sides would be bench seats. And then, like I said, everything would be covered. Right now, it's tough to look at the picture on the left, but all you can see is the middle section that's covered.
Yeah.
On that current grandstand. And in the in the middle section, we would have a press box. Right now, we do have a press box, but it's off to the side. It's just nice to have one in the center so you can see everything going on.
So the announcers can second guess those arms.
Yes, exactly. And you know, we do, and I think it's last year or two years ago, H C V N comes down and and streamlines our game, every home game. At first, we thought, is that going to take away our fans? Actually, it brought more fans down. Because a lot of people see the game on TV and they don't know there's a field down there. And they see how beautiful the field is and all of a sudden they're coming down and watching the game. So that has helped us tremendously and we're going to do it again this year.
The only other thing, Kyle, is you're you had donations from Clancy, that's Clancy Kirk.
Yep.
That's I mean, he's a very big supporter of athletics all through Hutchinson, so.
Yeah, he's like I know he he bought the last, probably the last two scoreboards for us. But, you know, everybody else is asking Clancy for help and he's got to distribute his donations around, so. And we're very thankful for all the people that have donated for, you know, for projects down there, so. I don't know if anybody has been to the game, but I'm going to give you guys a T-shirt. And we have a family pass for the Huskies game. So come on down and enjoy a game.
Unfortunately, we can't accept.
Except?
Unfortunately.
Give it to some fans, Kyle.
Huh?
Give, yes, give it, may I have a drawing?
Yeah.
Good, good thought, Pat.
Because what is what is the line? It's like seven bucks or something?
Seven bucks or something.
Three dollars. Donated.
If you want to donate it to the city.
I'll donate to the city.
Distribute that amongst the city. We'll find a way to do that, so.
I have shirts with your names on it and a pass.
Leave it with me. We can have a conversation later, so.
Kyle, right now, it's all bench seating, correct?
It's right now, it's all bench seats. When I when I talked to the guy that this, the guy that I've been talking to for the grandstand is the same guy that did the football field stadium seats. And he said, right now, currently, our seating is the minimum it can be for seat wide for reasons whatnot. So it's it's back in eighty-six when people were
shorter.
Shorter, smaller. He was ideal, but, you know, it's right now, it's not. A lot of people have to sit sideways and whatnot. It's inconvenient. So.
Mayor Council, you know, we staff has been in both Lynn, myself, and JJ and others have been in conversations with the Huskies. They came and presented to the council a year and a half ago, maybe a year ago.
A year and a half.
About these plans, you know, part of this presentation tonight is going to give you an update on where they're at. Obviously, you've heard a request from them. There's no action item on the agenda. But just to kind of maybe fill in, right now, there's there is nothing currently in our in our C I P for this project. And so you've heard the request tonight from the Huskies. And just since this is a field that we own, it would have to be a project that we would that we would have to take on. So we'd have to go through the normal bidding process if we were to do it. Their desire is to try to get this done by the end of next season, so probably by the fall of two thousand twenty-four, with their desire to host in with their plans to host a state tournament in two thousand twenty-five. And so i- if if this project were to go, we'd likely be looking to have it to bid it out probably late winter, early spring of two thousand twenty-four. So just something to keep in the in the back of your mind. Obviously, it's not here for an action item, so there's no direction that's needed tonight. But I think both the Huskies and staff would appreciate, at least from the council's perspective, direction one way or the other, probably sometime, I'm sure sooner than later for planning purposes, so.
So Kyle, you said two fifty to three hundred is about half the project?
Yeah.
Do you guys have ninety right now?
We have ninety right now.
Sure.
But a lot of the people I've talked to are waiting to see what the city of Hutch will contribute.
Sure.
Before they give a he. And so the main reason I'm doing this, so when I was seventeen years old, guys like Dave Mooney, Bruce Rosenau, Ralph Johnson, Lee Cool, Lee Cox, all those guys did this for me. They got this field ready so I could play on. And I'm just trying to do this for the next generation. So the people that come and can have a beautiful field, beautiful stands, just for the next generation, so.
Anything else for Kyle?
Thanks, Kyle.
Just a question. Do you ever have the opportunity to rent out the field to some, like if a band was to come in or?
So what year was it? We did have a band down there one at a water carnival weekend. I put together, do you remember what year that was, Melissa? That was quite a few years ago. There's a water carnival weekend and nobody was having a band in Hutchinson. So I thought, why not have a band after one of our games? So I got Papa Shaw down there, Shaw Band, and they performed after our game.
Did you have a big crowd?
We had a huge crowd. So we did it next year, then every business had a band.
But they have a
Weekend.
They have a crabby neighbor right across the
Right, yeah.
On the other side of the river, but I mean, on the other end of the river, but that's just I'm just curious.
Yeah, because we have a lot of space behind our grandstand where we had it. And it was it was packed. It was a lot of fun.
Cool.
Yeah. So like I said, we we know, like, we try to get back to the city of Hutch and we try to get people involved, businesses involved. And that's what we do. That's what the Huskies do, so.
Do you have any idea how long the construction window would be like? How long would it take to build it and like what time of year you'd have to build it or?
Like Matt said, we ideally, we'd like to start it in the fall of two thousand twenty-four.
So right after your season's done?
Right.
Sure.
Yeah.
They could get it buttoned up before winter? Or how long would it take to build something like that?
Uh, winter comes. Right. I I'm I'm not sure, you know, because we have to.
Have you with the person you spoke with like for the Hutch Grandstand, the football, did they have a timeframe or you haven't gotten that far?
He just said that they're six months out, so you'd have to know early. And ideal, you know, it'd be nice if the current grandstand could be used somewhere else, like the middle school field or something like that. Because right now, they don't have anything. All depends on if that's possible.
Is it movable or?
I think, well, I I can't really I think, well, I, I can't really see underneath because it's enclosed. I don't know what it all entails underneath, but.
I think, I'll be honest, you know, I think, um, probably most of that field or most of that, those concessions, that concession area, the seating could probably be transferred. Uh, we'd probably at least look at that, explore those options, so.
Right.
Anything else for Kyle?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on, uh, Economic Development Authority Year End Report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, just have a quick summary of what the Economic Development Authority's been up to this past year. And I'll be happy to answer questions as we go. So just real quick, the mission of the Hutchinson Economic Development Authority, it's really to facilitate redevelopment and that's mostly downtown is where we do that work. Uh, but then also job creation and the success of manufacturing in the community. So we focus on manufacturing because that's really, that's what we are here in Hutchinson. We are Minnesota's manufacturing city. And, um, the family of companies we have here are, are evidence of that. Um, the strategies of the EDA, what we kind of emphasize and really all of these would be rated number one because they're all really important. But a big focus here is downtown redevelopment and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Business retention and expansion, business incubation, that's a newer thing for us. We're trying to attract, uh, business expansion projects. And then a newer thing is the development of skilled workforce or talent development, because that's such a major issue nowadays. And like I said, all of these bases, I had them numbered one to five at one point and I thought, well, that's not accurate. They're all number one, really. So, quick overview on downtown redevelopment activities, you know, we have our three grant loan programs for the downtown area. And, uh, so this past year, we did five sign and owning grants, a little bit less than ten thousand dollars awarded there. Uh, four facade improvement grants, that's a matching grant. So, we invested twenty seven thousand. The owner of the building matched that with their twenty seven thousand. And then we had one commercial loan down, downtown. And then over the years, since we started these programs a couple decades ago, we've doled out hundred ninety eight sign and owning grants, um, eighty nine facade improvement grants and fifty three commercial rehabilitation loans. So, right there, it's, um, pretty close to three million dollars of investment right in the downtown area. So, I mean, I hear all the time, you know, Hutchinson's got such a great looking downtown. Well, this is part of that. I mean, we keep investing in it all the time. So that really does pay dividends for us. And it makes sense because if you think about it, the downtown area, that's the market value of our community. Those, there's a heck of a lot of market value downtown and we absolutely want to preserve that. Um, other downtown activities, you're well aware of the Hutch Uptown Commons Project. That continues to move forward and I'll just say, there's a lot of steps. There's lots and lots of steps. Years ago, twenty sixteen, I think it was, we bought what wasn't old, um, at one time it was a medical clinic and then at another time it was sort of a commercial building. That thing was literally caving in on itself. I mean, the roof had given way. So we bought that and demoed that and that was kind of the start. And then as opportunities arose, we just kind of kept adding in little pieces to this, so. You know, we bought the Franklin House fairly recently and cleared that lot. And now we're in the process of acquiring the lot, the buildings on the west side of the lot to, um, create a bigger redevelopment area. So, basically, the way that this will unfold now, going forward, this year, we want to complete the property acquisitions, we'll remove all the buildings. And then, my understanding is in spring of twenty twenty four, that's when we would realign the sanitary sewer that runs across the block, that's this green line. We're going to route that around the perimeter. Um, the street will get resurfaced. Uh, the riverbank will get all cleaned up. Right now, it's kind of rustic, I'll say that. But we'll get that all cleaned up and stabilize the riverbank and then, um, a stormwater pond will get constructed here. And then after the Fourth of July, that's when the developer would come in and then they're going to begin construction of a seventy five unit apartment complex. So, this is the latest site plan. This is kind of a moving target, but this is kind of how the site will lay out. So, most of it, you know, there'll be a chunk of it that's parking and then this here sort of backwards, C shape, that'll be the apartment building. Ground level parking with, I think, three stories of apartments up above. That's where, where it's going. Um, originally, we had hoped that this was going to kick off this year, but because of interest rates being high, material prices still kind of high, the developer just said, no, let's just, we'll just wait a little bit here, get a little better economic conditions before we roll this out. This is one concept, um, I don't think it's going to look like this. I mean, it, it keeps changing, so, but it'll be of this nature, it'll be this scale. So, I mean, it'll be pretty revolutionary change for that part of Hutchinson and it's going to bring a lot of families, a lot of people living in and around the downtown. That's going to be a big, uh, boost to economic activity in the downtown for the state theater and the coffee shops and the restaurants and all that stuff. You want to get people living in and around the downtown, so. So far on this whole project, now we, we got our FEMA grant, which you're aware of. Um, and then they boosted that number up a little bit to help offset inflation, so that was six hundred and seventy five thousand, I think, altogether. And we've acquired two properties and later on during this meeting, we'll talk about acquiring some more properties. Yeah, and then the Franklin House has been removed. So that's kind of what's happening over there. Jorgensen Hotel, that's been purchased by a Duluth developer. He's talking about a six million dollar project. This one, I was hoping was going to go this year, but I think it's going to slide to next year is what it sounds like. Um, again, it's higher interest rates and then material prices, that's kind of upset his financing pro forma, so we got to kind of review that and see what we can do there to make everything work. So, developers looking at different options, we're thinking about different options and hopefully this will be a twenty twenty four project. I think that's pretty much it for the downtown. Business retention, expansion, that's a really important thing that we're engaged in because it's our existing companies. That's always your number one source of economic development, new job creation, all that stuff. So, it's the most effective economic development strategy, so. To that end, I went out and visited ten local manufacturers last year. And out of, we have a family of about thirty, so I kind of put them on a rotation and I go visit a chunk every year. So, um, as I talk with, um, these owners and managers, workforce is still the number one concern. That's the biggest thing they're worried about. Um, a whole bunch of companies are still hiring, even still, they need more people. Um, that, that just keeps, yeah, that just is the number one thing by far. And then during the pandemic, they had some pretty big issues with supply chain because so many things, you know, would come from China or come from overseas and, or even come from Canada. And pandemic restrictions really, really clamped down on these supply chains and made it difficult for people, so. Um, that issue is kind of resolving. I think they're doing better there. Most of the companies I talk with are pretty busy. Um, we've all heard, you know, we've had some, do some layoffs with three M, uh, Upennor and HTI. And I think those will probably turn around here by the second half of the year. They'll probably get back into hiring mode. But we'll just have to wait and see how it goes. Um, even with that, there's eight or nine or ten companies I know that are still looking for people even today. I sat down and added up all the projects here since twenty seventeen, so in the last six years, we've had eighteen local manufacturers expand in one way or another, so. That's just been a huge, I never realized it was that much, quite frankly, because we've added over eight hundred and fifty thousand square feet of manufacturing in the last six years and that is a huge number. I mean, that's, that's half of a three M plant that's added. And so that would be either new companies coming in to take up vacant space uh, or companies doing a physical addition to their current facility, things like that. So, out of the eighteen projects, the EDA was directly involved in about half of them, which I think is probably about the right number. I mean, you don't get involved in every single thing because projects can happen on their own too. And the EDA, we just want to be in there to help push the ones into the end zone that need a little bump just to make the thing work. So, if we're doing about half, that probably is about the right number. So, huge growth in manufacturing in Hutchinson over the last several years. Um, just this last year, twenty twenty two, we had Fire Lake Manufacturing, they moved into a new building. They went from eight thousand square feet to twenty thousand square feet. And then the EDA, we partnered with Southwest Initiative Foundation at Mid Minnesota Development Commission to provide a loan. Altogether, I think it was a hundred and five thousand, so we did about a third of that to help them with leasehold improvements. And then, of course, RD Machine is doing an expansion right now. So we did an Economic Development TIFF District to help offset the cost for soils. And they're adding twenty one thousand square feet and there's a rendition of how it's going to look here by probably end of October, I think that'll be done. So that's exciting project I've seen. Um, and then business incubation, that's mostly just centered around the Hutchinson Enterprise Center. So we've got three tenants now. They're going to be, they're going to be out of the building, they're going to graduate by the end of this calendar year. So we're in the process now of recruiting new tenants and you know, I'm optimistic, we'll see how that goes, but, um, yeah, we'll keep working on that. Should be new tenants in there by, by New Year's Day, hopefully. Um, and then also, you know, we do partner with other organizations. We're, we're partners with Small Business Development Center. We give them office space at the Enterprise Center to operate out of. And then we're also partnering with the Veterans Business Outreach Center. Um, and that's a, a great organization that caters more toward businesses, uh, veterans that want to, when they get out of the military, they want to start a business or whatever, that's where the V-Bock fits in to help these guys and gals um, launch into business. So, as part of that, um, May eighteenth, I think we said, yeah. May eighteenth, we'll have a Bootstap Business Workshop at the Enterprise Center, so we'll have a bunch of, of vets out for that and we'll, we'll see how that goes. Um, and then also in the line, in, uh, in the realm of business incubation, we have our Jump Start Downtown Project. The big one that's hanging out there right now is Gold Coin. So, I mean, that is progressing. It's not moving as fast as I would prefer, but we're doing everything we can to kind of push that forward, so. I know the, I was in the building fairly recently. They've taken out all the old interior and now a new interior has been designed. I know they just got their plumbing permit from the state or at least got okayed. So I think they're ready, hopefully, to begin construction and hopefully we'll see more activity here in the next couple of months. Um, and then business attraction, that's really about just having what companies are looking for. So, I mean, we want to have building space or industrial park space, workforce, all those things. Because if we have those things, that's what's going to draw companies in. So in twenty twenty two, the new addition, uh, to Hutchinson was a company called Milk Specialties Global. And they're headquartered in the cities. They've got a number of facilities all around Minnesota. But they signed a long-term lease for ninety five thousand square feet in the HTI building, so. They're going to be setting up a warehouse and then also packing lines. Because they'll be bringing in product in bulk and then it's going to get packed into containers for retail sale. So they'll, you know, bring in, uh, large quantities of it and basically put it in the coffee cans and that's what will happen here, so. Um, once it ramps up, it'll probably be about sixty employees. And then the company, it's, it's human and animal nutrition products. So for animals, it'd be things like milk replacer for for humans, like protein powder that you would find at a nutrition shop or something like that. That's what these guys do. Um, and then talent development, that's a really big one. Just because demographics, you know, over the next ten, fifteen years, the workforce is going to continue to shrink down. And that's just the baby boomers retiring and we just don't have enough people coming in behind them, so. Really, workforce development, that's going to be our number one thing or one of our top things for at least the next decade, if not longer. So, um, to kind of help with this here, you know, we started doing these workshops for human resources directors around town. And we do it every other month. It all started with, uh, we did an employee retention workshop last year. And then, then we just said, well, let's get together in two months and that's just kind of snowballed. And so now we, we meet every two months and last time, I think we had seventeen people here representing thirteen employers. So that's been very positive and we'll continue to do that. We have our next one in June and, um, have a guest speaker coming in for that, so we'll see how that goes. And then, um, and then I kind of briefed you previously on our, on our effort to kind of retain workers that commute to the cities. So, that one, we kind of put on hold temporarily just because with three M not being in a hiring mode and Upennor not being in a hiring mode, we just don't have enough job openings to put on it to make the thing work. So, we have to wait until some of these bigger employers start hiring again. Then we'll roll out this project and, and launch it. So, we're still going to do it. Might be more toward the end of the year, I think, before we actually do that. Um, and then Tiger Path, that's really the centerpiece of our workforce development efforts because we have all these students here. We have, you know, it's, it's a hundred and ninety or two hundred students graduating every year from Hutchinson High School. You know, we can do a lot with that group right there. So that's the central premise of Tiger Path. It's building, we're going to build our own workforce. So, the ED has been heavily involved in that. We continue to be heavily involved in it. Yeah, we're just involved in every part of it. So, uh, you can see the, kind of the milestones there on the left. Um, the one, the more recent things was the CNA program, so there's a couple of the gals there. So that's been a really big hit. We had thirty five students certified as CNAs so far, right in high school. And our next step now, um, what we're researching, there's a program called Meteor. And it's basically Tiger Path, but instead of in high school, it's in middle school. And so we're, we're going to be looking into that and that is very, I think, very possibly something that could be the next advance for us as we continue to roll and build upon Tiger Path. And this is a great example of just a lot of collaboration between private sector and the public sector. I mean, our local manufacturers and really all kinds of local businesses just continue to be contributing to this and participating in this. We couldn't obviously do it without them. But it's just all these partners that come together to make this thing a success. And it's, it's been really, really successful. Three M, I just love this. I, Three M just went and put up a billboard on the south end of town on Highway fifteen and that's, that's Tiger Path. It's follow your own path to success. So, uh, Three M, I mean, gosh, I can't say enough about those guys. They just have been such an awesome partner and such a big blessing to the community and we wouldn't be anywhere near where we are now without those guys being at the table. So, it's just huge. And then with Tiger Path, we're actually getting more and more famous. We're hosting a conference this very Friday about Tiger Path and student-centered workforce solutions and we have a hundred and ninety seven people attending, coming from all over Minnesota. I mean, East Grand Forks to Rochester to Duluth to Worthington and they're all coming here to learn about how do we do these things because they want to copy. They want to do their own version of Tiger Path. So, um, Southwest Initiative Foundation has been extraordinarily generous because they sponsor the conference. They say, we'll sponsor it, you organize it, but we'll sponsor it. So, um, this is our third Tiger Path Conference. We did two of them pre-pandemic. This will be our first one back since the pandemic and all indications are, we'll be doing this again in the future. And this helps us, it helps us recruit companies actually, because we get a reputation of a community that has an actual answer to workforce needs. We have an answer for that. And it works because local, local employers are getting students coming right out of high school, going to work for them. And it's been very, very successful. It's just really, really been a home run for us. Those, that kind of sums it up for, I guess, the activities. The challenges, um, right now, we're kind of in an interesting place because we don't have any manufacturing building space. There's no place to put them anymore because all the buildings got filled and everything's full. So that's, that's something that we're working on. There's no place to put them anymore because all the buildings got filled and everything's full. So that's, that's something that we're working on. Um, shortage of skilled workforce, that's just an every year thing. And then, as you well know, housing shortage. So that's one thing that's on the list of things to do. Childcare shortage. So those are kinda the, the, the things we gotta be thinking about going forward. Um, and I just wanna say thank you for your support. I mean, we couldn't do it without your support. Um. I go to conferences and things with other economic development people and I tell them all the things that we're doing in Hutchinson and how much support we get to make that possible. And they're just eating their heart out because why can't I get supported like that? You know, they say. And we just do it here in Hutchinson. So I just wanna say thanks for the support. It makes it a fun place to work. We can actually get a lot of stuff done because the council and the E D board. They say, go get it done. Let's get it done. So I mean, that's just a great thing. So I wanna say thanks for that. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions for Miles? Must've done a good job, Miles.
I just wanna, I, I wanna know how famous are we getting? Start putting up statues and stuff like that or?
I, well, I don't know. But now the latest thing, I mean, Jeremy Carter rounded me up because he wants me to go to this. I can't even, Missouri River Energy Evil operative thing, whatever it is, in Sioux Falls. So I'll be there in two weeks talking about Tiger Path to a hundred and fifty, uh. Utility executives from all over the upper Midwest. I mean, it is getting more famous. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Miles. Moving on, uh, new business, resolution number one, five, six, zero, zero. Resolution adopting and finding a facts and reason for approval of conditional use permit. For the driving range and batting cage, private club located at nine forty North High Drive. Northwest with split planning commission recommendation.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Council. If you just give me one second, I'd like to pull up the drawing. I'm almost to where I need to be. To get that pulled up here. Then I'll put it back up on the screen. Okay, here we go. So, uh, as you noted, uh, last Tuesday night, we had a planning commission meeting. Uh, the agenda item was a conditional use permit for a batting, uh, cage, uh, driving range facility. Uh, located up off of North High Drive. Uh, years ago, there was a driving range and then a nine-hole golf course up in this area. Uh, the reason the conditional use permit is needed is because it's for a private club within a residential area. So it'd be similar to like a, a golf course or any. You know, club like that, that, that you would have that requires us to. Uh, look at it as a conditional use and idea for the conditional uses. Is that any negative effects that may come from this? You would mitigate those through the conditional use permit. So during that meeting, obviously staff gave planning report, uh, that you had in your packet. Uh, discussed it. Uh, some of the neighbors spoke. There were some questions relative to, um, golf balls hitting houses and such. And then, uh, noise. And, uh, it's about, uh. Over probably three hundred yards or more from the, the range to the, where the houses are. Again, not to say that a ball couldn't hit that far, but generally speaking, you know, most folks aren't hitting that far with a, with a golf ball. Um, so that was one of the concerns, uh, that was brought up by the neighbors. And then one was also. Noise, uh, potentially from batted balls as well as from the golf clubs. Hitting golf balls and the baseball driving range, or excuse me, batting cage. Uh, so those were some of the concerns. Um, the planning commission looked at it, talked about it. Uh, one of the members was, uh, concerned about the po- the possibility of noise from, from bats. And then also, um, being that this is kind of a temp, not temporary, but a, not a year-round facility. Uh, there's a current, um, bathroom facility there that uses a holding tank. And the idea is, is that it's more efficient to utilize, uh, portable bathrooms versus a holding tank. Uh, similar to probably what we do around town here in some of the parks and things like that. So there was concern that, you know, there's portable bathroom use wasn't maybe the, the way that they wanted to see it. So in the end. Uh, the planning commission approved it, I believe, on a vote of five to one. Uh, and again, the, the concerns from the, the member were the potential noise and then the, the portable bathrooms from staff perspective. Um, you know, from that distance, um, we didn't think that, uh, noise would be a huge issue. Not to say it couldn't be. And if there was noise issues, we thought was is that in the cit- the current city noise ordinance would, would be in effect and, you know, could be. Used to address any noise issues. Um, the facility won't be operating, you know, in the evening or at night. It's more of a, a daytime activity. We did put restrictions, I believe, from, uh, seven A M. to sunset on the use. Uh, so that's kind of the background of it, I guess. If there's any questions for staff, certainly be able to answer those.
Is the driving range on the same footprint as the old driving range, what is a golf course?
Yeah, generally speaking, it is.
And then for the, the noise ordinance to be similar to like up at the golf course, the Kroger when they have. Um, weddings and stuff like it's a decibel level, is that?
Yeah, generally speaking, there's a, there's a decibel level that, that needs to be met for a certain amount of time. Um, you know, we also noted that there's several, you know, baseball, softball fields and batting cages around town. Staff wasn't aware of any noise complaints per se coming from, you know, batted balls. You know, at it, you know, up close, you can probably get, hear somebody at a distance. It kinda just ends up, uh, being kind of background noise like. Other trucks or whatnot kinda blends together was our thought. Again, not that there couldn't be an issue at some point.
Cause how many batting cages are there gonna be?
I think there's two, correct? Six lanes? Okay. Yeah, six, six lanes. And the other thing I think is important to note that this isn't going to be, what I'd say operated like maybe. Someplace you'd see like on vacation or it's like a big, you know, recreational outdoor place. It's more of a. I think it more of a hobby for the, uh, landowner and his children. To utilize this space until at which point it might be developed for a housing type use in the future.
Cause if you only have six people batting, there's no way you're gonna hit a noise ordinance decibel level with.
If I was at the driving range, language might be a problem, but that's just me.
Again, and then I think it was good to get the perspective of the neighbors and make sure that their, you know, their thoughts were heard and, and to address and make sure that. And there's, if there is issues, there's a, a way to address those as, as they would come up.
I think I saw that there was a discussion about a fence being put up if needed.
Yeah, there was a, a discussion about, um, again, it's, it's pushing a thousand feet from the driving range to the homes. Believe the applicant noted that if, if necessary, he'd be willing to put up a fence to block the homes. And, and also, you know, that could also potentially block the view to, you know. Out into that open space. So there's pros and cons to that.
So are we talking about the homes like on the east side of this map?
Um, I think down on the south end.
Down, you, you, it kinda gets cut off here, but, uh, right down in, in this area where my mouse cursor is moving is the. It's kinda the, that part of that neighborhood there.
Sure. So that's about three hundred yards from the driving range down there or?
Yes.
Not only three hundred yards?
Three, three fifteen, somewhere in that range. Yeah.
No, we'll have to have crowd control and Tiger Woods shows up to hit it that far.
Chad, you wouldn't hit any of those houses. Nothing to worry about.
Yeah.
Dan, I don't remember any, you know, when the batting cages were up on fifteen north. I don't think we ever had any complaints of noise up there.
Well, no houses up there either.
Yeah, they, they were out of city limits. But still, it's, it's within the joint planning area that I am a part of their staff.
Yeah.
For joint planning and, and my years here, thirteen years, we haven't had any issues. Again, there's less. Probably less, well, there's a distance here too, but there's less homes in general up that area than there is down this way. Yes, so staff had recommended approval of this.
Make a motion approve. Motion one, five, six, zero, zero.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve the resolution. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Dan. Uh, we have purchase agreement with Greg and Gene Witt. For one twenty-five Glen Street Northwest and. One thirty-five First Avenue Northwest and one forty-five First Avenue Northwest.
Okay, Mayor and Council, we have a couple items for you to consider. Um, this is all related to the Hutch Uptown Grand Project on the north end of Franklin Street between Franklin and Glen. Um, so far, we've purchased these two houses, um, closest to the river. And what's under consideration tonight would be the purchase of this house in the middle and then the two houses that front on First Avenue. So just, uh, by way of background, a couple of years back, we had applied to FEMA. For some grant dollars to help us remove these properties from the hundred-year floodplain of the Crow River. And then running parallel with this here is the, the apartment project that we talked about previously. So. This is all about kind of, um, we're bringing these all together. So, um, the FEMA project area is in yellow. And one of the houses that we're talking about tonight would be in the FEMA project area. The other two are not. So. Our goal is to remove that one house from the hundred-year floodplain and then also assemble the, the site for this larger redevelopment project. So just showed you that. That's kinda where the site's going in terms of layout. And then this is what we're talking about tonight would be, uh, requesting council authorization to purchase these three properties. So it's one twenty-five Glen, right in the middle of the block, uh, one forty-five First Avenue Northwest. This is actually, um, it's not habitable anymore. And then a little house here, one thirty-five, uh, First Avenue Northwest. So. Between the purchase price for all of those and the closing costs, it would come to a total of five hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars. The way that we would fund that, uh, some of that, a slice of that would come from the FEMA grant that I mentioned previously. And then the rest of it is gonna ultimately, it'll come from development district number four. What we did is we set up a redevelopment TIF district on this lot. So once. Once the apartment complex gets built, we'll be capturing a slice of the property taxes that they pay. That's all gonna come back to reimburse us for these acquisitions. So there's a, there's a plan to get all reimbursed. So. That's where the funding is gonna come from ultimately. Short term, we're gonna be borrowing money from the downtown loan fund to help make this acquisition. Um. Yeah, I think that's about it. So, um, I guess any questions? There's three separate purchase agreements, cause there's three separate properties. And we're seeking council authorization to move ahead with those purchases.
See, Miles, since you're there, why don't you just touch on items number twelve and thirteen as well?
Okay.
The, the lease and the relocation.
Okay. Um, in working with the property owners, we're trying to make the, the whole process as easy as possible for them. So. Recognizing that there's not a whole lot of options out there to go out and buy a house or rent a house or whatever. The proposal was that we would buy the houses and then lease them back to them for a few months. Now I'll just give them time to make plans to wherever they're moving to. So item number two on the list would be just to. Approve two lease agreements. One would be with Greg and Gene Witt for the house that they live in today. And then Greg and Jean's daughter live in the, the house on the lower right. So we would lease that back to her. For a few months. I mean, it would go a maximum until the end of September. Probably would not go that far, but it'd be just a month, a month lease for a hundred dollars a month. So. Just to give these guys a window of time to make plans and get packed up and moved out. So that's where the lease agreements come into play. Um, and then the resolution that's mentioned there. It's kind of a quirky thing because with FEMA, they give me paperwork I have to fill out and. On this paperwork that I fill out and I have to have Greg and Gene sign it, it says no relocation benefits. And that's from the federal side, but state of Minnesota has a law in place that says, yes, you will pay relocation benefits. That's the one that governs. So we're absolutely gonna pay. We're legally obligated to pay them relocation benefits. And so the resolution is just basically the city council saying. We're paying, we're gonna pay these relocation benefits. Don't worry about this other form. Cause. So really, it's just kind of a peace of mind thing for these guys. So we wanna treat them right. We want them to come out of this saying, hey, we got treated fair by the city. And that's what this is all about. So. I think that's it. I'll be happy to answer questions.
It's been a long process.
It's been a real process, yes. Yes.
Could we do all three of them, Matt? If that's the desire of the council, yes, you could.
Make a motion to approve these two agreements and the one resolution together. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. Both agreements and resolution number one, five, five, nine, nine. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. We have resolution number one, five, five, nine, eight. Resolution declaring intent on bonding reimbursement. Andy.
Hit the man council. This is the, the one resolution that was updated. Um. I think Andy will touch on what, what was the portion that was updated on that.
Yeah. Good evening, here are council members. So, so as you know, each year, uh.
Miles, sorry.
Each year we have roadway projects that we issue bonds to finance those project costs. And specifically the bonds we issue are tax-exempt bonds. And with tax-exempt bonds, there's certain legalities we need to follow to make the, the, the bond attorneys happy. And specifically with this, uh, agenda item to make the IRS happy. And that's essentially to pass this resolution that declares our intent that. If, uh, that we're gonna reimburse certain project costs with our bond proceeds. And this is, this is really necessary because we, our practice has been to start the roadway projects. And then bond later in the year. That allows us to, to make, uh, hone in on our bond, uh, amount more exact. Than if we bonded earlier in the process, we'd have to bond based on engineering estimate. So this helps keep our debt levy. Um, as low as possible. Otherwise, we'd have to be, uh, including a larger contingency with our bond, uh, bond process. So, uh, as I said, this is a requirement for the IRS to make them happy. Um, but we have, what we have to do is also identify the projects and that's, I, um, I've identified. Those projects on the first page of the resolution. Um, you're probably aware of most of these, Roberts Road. Our pavement management program. And we're doing some improvements to, to two of the city alleys. Improvements to city bridges. And then the last two I have, which, uh, necessitated this revision. Um, originally, we were looking at a Jefferson Street Improvement Project out by Airport Road. And then, uh, with the change in county engineers, it looked like this project was gonna get pushed to next year. So then we looked at doing the parking lot at the fire hall instead. We can't do both. We can do either or. So I quick, uh, through the Jefferson Street project on this resolution tonight, just in case that actually happens. Then we're covered and we can reimburse certain costs with our bond proceeds. Otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to, to reimburse ourselves. So that's the short of it. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but it's, it's the resolution you see every year with our process.
Make motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve resolution number one, five, five, nine, eight. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on governance, we have Public Arts Commission minutes from March eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Planning Commission minutes from March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Sustainability Advisory Board minutes from November twenty-first. Two thousand twenty-two and March of twenty of two thousand twenty-three. The City of Hutchinson Financial Report and Investment Reports for March of two thousand twenty-three. The Hutch, uh, City of Hutchinson Annual Snow Removal Reports for two thousand twenty-two. Through two thousand twenty-three. Chief Jefferson. Chief Gifferson, you got anything for us? I would like you to talk about, a little bit about the, the scams that have been going around and what people can do to protect themselves.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, I think probably the best piece of advice that I could give anybody is just be very skeptical. If you're offered something for nothing. Um, and just scrutinize that more than you probably normally would. Also, most organizations aren't going to um. Ask you to re- repay a debt with Bitcoin or Walmart. Uh, gift cards or anything like that. If somebody's asking you to do that, especially over the telephone, um, be very skeptical. And if anybody. Has any questions regarding that, they can certainly call or stop down to the, the police department and talk to somebody down there. I think that's probably about it. And I just be very vigilant about that stuff. And just even if you. If uh you think it's too good to be true, it probably is. And if you have any doubts, just talk to a family member or something to run by them before you actually. Send any money or out of your bank accounts or anything like that.
All right. Thanks, Chief. Any other thing for Chief Gifferson tonight? Thanks, Chief.
Have a good night.
Mike, do you have anything for us? All right, uh, Mark.
Nothing tonight.
All right, Chad, let's start with you.
I don't have anything extra, is it?
Tim.
Beautiful weather. Watch for kids and bikes.
Door's right on my wall. I have nothing else.
Pat?
I'm gonna put in a little plug for the Bike Walk Run. It's Wednesday, May third. And uh, it's to go and I think Gary, you're gonna be there.
Oh, uh, walk, walk, walk the school day.
Yeah, yeah. And it's their new discovery is included. So I mean, it's a chance to, there's a two hour late start that day, Wednesday, May third. And uh. I'm gonna try and get that old bike and I have to look at it and get it redone. But uh, go into it. You just go with the kids to school. So it's kind of a nice little thing to uh.
Uh, I know Chief, yeah, Chief Gifferson participates in that too. Of course, he has a shorter route than what I do, but. I don't know. He, he must be, he must be nicer to Lynn. I don't know.
You see how concerned he was.
Yeah, I know.
Couple different things. First off, just kind of a heads up. We'll probably have it on our next agenda for formal approval, but we're looking at a, a May twenty third. Workshop. That'll be our budget kickoff meeting. And then a June twenty seventh workshop. That'll be for the growth planning study, um, which ties in a little bit to our housing study tonight. Both those will be at four o'clock. Um, so that's just kind of a early heads, or an early heads up. We'll get that on the, the next council agenda. And then something else just to be thinking about. We have started the process of putting together our National Citizen Survey. That's the one that we do every four years. Um, we can do a half page of custom questions. So if there's something that the council would like to ask the public outside of what would, what would I would say is our typical. Normal questionnaire, um, just to be thinking about that. Um, last time we asked a question about the sales tax. I think we asked a question about additional funding for street repairs. There might have been a third one. I don't know if I. Remember exactly what that question was, but we have the opportunity to do that again this year. Um, we'll be bringing those items in front of the council here come the month of May. But just to be thinking, you know. So it's not maybe new for you. If there's something you wanna ask the community, um, that's a good way to do that. Um, so just to be maybe thinking about some of those questions. And then maybe just the last thing, obviously, you know, you, we, we heard from the Huskies and I, you know, I think staff is just gonna be looking for some. Direction from the council. Um, so if there's anything that you have questions on. Uh, most likely that'll be something we bring up during our budget um discussions. Um, but if there's something that you would like. Us to get to you as you think about that request tonight, just reach out to me. I think it'd be nice to see how it could fit into future projects, you know, like I think people can agree that the Huskies are a great asset. But that's a lot of money, so. Yeah, you know, I think when we think about, you know, we, in the last couple of years, we've had discussions about splash pad. We've, you know, we, you know, we're having conversations about obviously sales tax. We know there's potential for a. Minor league hockey team coming in town and maybe some potential improvements that are needed there. On top of that, we've got a current facility plan. You know, so there's a lot of, I think it's just one of those priorities and where do you wanna, you know, assign some of that money. There are some things. Coming down that we, I think in a month, we'll have a better idea. There's right now the current omniv- omnibus tax bill. We're looking at an increase of about five hundred thousand dollars in local government aid starting next year, you know, so. Um, there's some possibilities there too. Like I said, I think it's probably more of a budget discussion for us, but yeah, we can look at. You know, what that means and what that impact would have potentially on. Other projects, so. Otherwise, that's it for me, so.
All righty. Well, let's uh, I think this is gonna be one of the nicer evenings of the week, so. Motion by Pat, second by Chad to adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.